I'd like to call the order, call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Before we get started, I would ask if you stand and salute the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as this is.
All right, taking a quick, uh, quick peek at the agenda, schedule items, I don't see any. Uh, I think that could be a first, so we're gonna move right into residents. Would any residents like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna move into new business. Any of the selectmen have any new business to offer?
Mr. Chairman.
Nope. Seeing none. Mr. Montori, the spotlight is on you. We're gonna move right into Town Manager section.
Um, I wanna do a couple of easy things before I go to the, uh...
Sure.
So, the warrant for the town election was provided by the town clerk, and I believe was available for the board to review and sign, so I just need the board to approve the, I think it's with the black book, might be with the black book, approve the town election warrant as presented by the town clerk for the election to be held April 6th.
Make a motion to approve the town election warrant as presented by the town clerk for the April 6th, 2019 election.
I have a motion or I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. Any discussion on, on the warrant? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The unanimous.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we have a town council invoice for January 16th through January 31st, 2019, in the amount of $4,292.50, and I would recommend approval.
Pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve Town Council's invoice and the amount stated.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You name this.
Mr. Chairman, just, um, can I back up for one second?
Please, go ahead.
On the, um, on the warrant for the election, I think the last time we met, we talked about the ballot questions, and I believe since then, there was a change to the header of each question. I don't know if you wanna explain to interested parties what the technical change was, or just for clarity's sake.
Yeah, just, um, for the, when we finalized the, um, questions, we had, it was written at the end of the non-binding referendum questions that this is a non-binding referendum question, and the proper way to say it, according to the Secretary of State, is this question is not binding, so we just changed that wording.
So, they're a little different than prior drafts, but to be technically correct?
Correct.
Very good.
Okay, so with that, we can jump into the enterprise budgets and the five-year capital improvement plan. I think everyone has a, um, handout.
What are we doing first?
We'll go through the enterprise funds first.
Water, sewer?
Actually, cable.
Okay.
It's all, it's in the handout. If you go through the handout, the budgets are there. So, um, tonight, like every year, we break out the general fund operating budget and presentation, which is in January, and then sometime in February, I come back and present the enterprise budgets and the capital improvement plan to the Board of Selectmen. So, tonight, we'll be reviewing, for the first time, three enterprise budgets. We will be reviewing the cable enterprise budget, the water enterprise budgets, and the sewer enterprise budgets, oh, budget. Water has two budgets within its enterprise fund, it has distribution and filtration, cable and sewer just have one. The other present part of the presentation tonight will be water enterprise capital, sewer enterprise capital, and then I will review the water and sewer rate recommendations. And then, at the end, after I present the enterprise funds, I will go through and I will present the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. But before we jump into the actual enterprise budgets, I just wanted to quickly just make note that as part of this presentation, I always like to refresh everyone's memory, as well as those who may see this online, maybe watching on TV and following it, the definition of an enterprise fund, which is set out in statute, Chapter 44, 53, F and a half, and it's essentially a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for municipal services that a community provides, and charges a fee for that goods or service, and that's what we have for our water, our sewer, and our cable. It allows us to charge and fund these operations outside the tax levy. There's always questions on whether it's a good idea to have an enterprise fund, and on this page is a list of reasons why it's a good idea to adopt an enterprise fund. It obviously identifies the service cost and which you're charging for, those who use the service pay for the service, which is always fair, provides good information for management, any investment, any investment income and surplus within the enterprise fund stays with that enterprise fund, it doesn't get dispersed to other funds. It also allows us not to have deficits in our general fund when we don't collect enough revenue to support a certain enterprise fund or support a certain service that we're charging a fee. It has strict Department of Revenue oversight, and it also has town meeting oversight and budgeting approval. The town established its enterprise fund for sewer in October of 2002. It then adopted a water enterprise fund in May of 2005, and most recently, we adopted the cable enterprise fund in May of 2016. Going further along, some terms we're gonna use tonight, again, just to, just to refresh everyone's memory, the property tax levy is the amount, is the revenue that we raise through real and personal property taxes within Proposition 2 and 1/2. As we know, Proposition 2 and 1/2 places a constraint on how much our levy can go up each year. The maximum levy in a given year can only go up 2 and 1/2 percent of the previous year's levy, but has allowable increases for new growth, any overrides for debt and capital exclusions. There are two ways of increasing above your property taxes above Proposition 2 and 1/2. The first is a capital outlay expenditure exclusion, which is something we don't normally or never have used in this community, but other communities have. And essentially, what it is, is when a town by vote of an elec, at an election approves a capital expenditure for a certain item. So, for example, if you buy a fire truck for $500,000 in town and at a town election that is approved, then for that one year, you can increase your levy, $500,000 to pay for the, for that piece of equipment or that vehicle, and then the following year, the levy will go back down. Now, in addition to that, you can have a debt exclusion, which is another vote by referendum that allows us to go over Proposition 2 and 1/2 for the life of debt service for a particular project. So, as we know, for the fire station, the high school, the library, the senior center, those are all approved by debt exclusion votes, and the excluded debt is above and beyond the tax levy, property tax levy of 2 and 1/2 percent, and it's for the life of the debt service. A capital budget and capital improvement plan, I'll speak to those together, essentially, it's just an appropriation spending plan that utilizes borrowing, existing funds for capital or fixed asset improvements to the community. Stabilization fund, which is something we talk about in both the operating budget and the, when we talk about the capital budget, is just a fund designated for capital and other future spending purposes or any other appropriation that's of a lawful purpose. You need a 2/3rds vote of town meeting to expend money from the stabilization fund. We currently have three stabilization funds. We have a general fund stabilization fund that has $4,740,967. We have a water stabilization fund specific to water improvements and water capital in the amount of $1,855,5165. We have a sewer stabilization fund in the amount of $3,808,962. Again, all need town meeting vote, 2/3rds vote to spend money from this fund, and it's set aside for, again, capital improvements or future spending. When we refer to the general fund, we're referring to the largest fund that we have in the town, which is where most of our financial resources and activities are governed from, and again, in order to spend from the general fund, you need appropriation from town meeting. When we refer to raise and appropriate, it's just a phrase to identify the funding source for an expenditure, mainly is referring to taking funds from the tax levy or other local receipts. When we refer to indirect costs or allocations tonight, that's the cost of services not reflected in, in any of the enterprise funds. They are allocations that are indirect costs for things such as the cost of, for employees who do billing for water and sewer, my time, the director of Public Works' time, being involved in water and sewer enterprise funds, accounting, IT, things like that. So, what their, their time shared for water and sewer enterprise or even cable, we charge back those costs. Free cash is the remaining unrestricted funds from, from the general fund or operations from the previous fiscal year. Each year, it's certified by the Department of Revenue and is available for appropriation. It's essentially the surplus at the end of the fiscal year, and right now, we have $600,000 as a balance in our certified free cash, and that's been set aside for any snow and ice deficits, deficits that we have this fiscal year.
Can you have, Mr. Montori, for that one there, I know it's, obviously, it changes annually, but do you have like a rough, a guesstimate what it is typically, like on average, or just is it, can it go from a million to 3 million?
I mean, it's ranged from being in the $2 million range, you know, 2 to 3 million dollar range, to the 5 million dollar range. It does fluctuate greatly each year, depending on how much our revenue comes in over our projections, any grants that come in that we're expecting, things like that. So, we've had, we've had over 5 million, and we've had somewhere in the 2 millions.
Okay, thank you.
Our retained earnings is similar to free cash, but for the enterprise funds, it's the accumulated earnings in an enterprise fund that are closed out at the end of the fiscal year, that are in excess of projections and any turnbacks from the general, from the enterprise fund, and it's used usually for capital expenditures, to reduce rates, or for any revenue deficits. Right now, our water enterprise has retained earnings in the amount of $2,356,468, and our sewer retained earnings are in the amount of $5,107,493. We do have cable retained earnings that I'll point out in a moment. So, jumping into the first enterprise fund is the cable enterprise fund, and this is the first time we'll have dealt with this budget. And it's pretty straightforward this year, because it's the first year we're bringing forward an actual budget for cable. Essentially, it has salaries for the two full-time employees that we have on staff, the director and the operations manager. In FY '20, and actually, we'll probably start in FY '19, we'll be utilizing salary, salaries to hire temporary part-time staff to assist with broadcasting meetings and events. We'll be hiring individuals who are interested in working part-time for the telemedia department, and they'll broadcast whether it's town meetings or town events or any other civic events that are going on that might be of interest to the community. For example, they've been filming all of the town and school meetings, they've been filming sporting events, girls and boys basketball, and this Friday, I understand, they'll be filming a cooking show at someone's house. So, they're off and running. On the operating side, funds, funds will be used for, to address equipment maintenance and operations, needs for programming and broadcasting of programs as needed throughout the year. So, this is for any type of computer, computer needs, hard drives, cameras, batteries, backup batteries, discs, professionals to come in and assist with any type of a setup that we need. It's just the general operations for running the telemedia department and broadcasting our events. And then, $90,000 in capital outlay will be used to provide upgrades to the high school auditorium. The plan from the telemedia department is to put fixed cameras in there so they can broadcast events from the auditorium and any other upgrades that are needed to broadcast live or tape properly from that venue. We've set aside funding within the budget for a reserve fund to allow the finance committee to make any transfers needed in case there are any emergencies throughout the year that funding isn't available, similar to water and sewer. We funded a projection for what the costs of other post-employment benefits would be for, for the employees. There's an indirect cost for health insurance and Medicare totaling $17,512. We'll eventually build retirement into that. We're projecting revenue from cable franchise fees in the amount of $600,000. That will leave us a surplus at the end of FY '20 of approximately $243,681, that if that's the case, will close to cable retained earnings. The amount of cable retained earnings that we currently have, $1,294. So, that's the cable budget. Any questions on that before I move on?
I do have a question. Just for people that are paying attention, we have always received cable funds, and I wanna just be clear on what year we started to put these into the retained earnings and kinda set off on this type of project. Was it 2016 or 2017?
It was probably around 2016 that we stopped putting the money into the...
General fund.
General fund, local receipts, and pulling them out and setting them aside into, to an enterprise fund, which started to build up these retained earnings.
I just want people to realize that this was not one year, so this was planned to get to this point.
How about, it looks like the capital is mainly going to the school. How about for Town Hall, any considerations to upgrade? I know sometimes the picture quality is slightly poor.
Yep, no, we're, we're, we've been actually doing upgrades to Town Hall this year, and if you, when you look at the budget we have FY '19, there's $250,000 in expenses. We've been using that money to fund any improvements to Town Hall, and in fact, because we'll have an excess in salaries in FY '19, we'll be asking the finance committee to transfer some of that money into expenses, so we continue to do upgrades at Town Hall. We're also doing upgrades at the school this year, in addition to next year, and just purchasing mobile equipment from going to, to go to place to place.
I'll go ahead, Ms. Tronick.
Just to piggyback on that question, is there ever an opportunity where you think that we will be able to do some kind of broadcasting from the library? They have so many programs going on. Is that something that...
Definitely.
The telemedia department would be interested in?
Definitely. In fact, they've already started to go to the library and broadcast. They haven't gone live yet, they've gone with some taped programming of author series, and they'll continue to go there to broadcast programs. Since we've brought fiber to all of our buildings, Jamie Bent undertook that project. Now that we have fiber to all our buildings, and once we, as long as we have internet access based on the equipment we're purchasing and the upgrades we're making, we'll be able to go live pretty much from anywhere.
Wow, that's great news.
Yeah, they do. Brian's done a terrific job. Senior Center, too, yeah.
Wow.
Yep, so we're getting there.
And just last one for me, I know it's been mentioned, the selectmen wear tape, the planning board is, is broadcast, I think plans like the Board of Health and other committees, I know, I know we have a lot of committees in town, but someone, you know, folks, you know, those are interesting to residents.
So, right now, we broadcast the selectmen, obviously, planning board, Brian's crew's gonna be broadcasting, taking over the broadcasting of the school committee meetings. They do, the Board of Health has been on TV and should be on TV, ZBA, I believe, should be and has been on TV. Conservation has, should be and has been on TV. If they haven't, we'll make sure all that gets taken care of, but I believe Brian and his crew have been broadcasting those as we, as they've gotten their feet on the ground. And the more we, if we can get more part-time help, so we're not running these, the two that we have every night, we'll be able to get to other events and other programming.
Yeah, I'm not looking to get crazy, but if we have the budget, I think it is important to air these committees, you know, it's volunteer work. I think it'd be very interesting to see, you know, a good many number of committees, if we can get them on TV.
Yep, no, I agree, and this, this room is set up for broadcasting and taping, as well as the small room, that's been set up for that also, so the goal was to, to do that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, next is our water enterprise fund. The water enterprise fund, as I mentioned, is made up of two budgets. The first we'll discuss is water distribution budget. This is for everything, all of our infrastructure outside the plant, as we would refer, refer to it. This is all the pipes, maintaining all the pipes and infrastructure we have in the ground, all of our pump stations, and throughout town.
How many plants, subplants?
Huh?
How many of those subplants?
Oh, no, it's in the sewer, we'll get to that. We wanna save that one.
Okay.
So, water distribution budget this year, salaries particularly are increasing, $33,142, and that is for the salary increases for 2.25 percent cost of living adjustment, any step increases to staff that works in the water distribution department, and any longevity changes. And we did increase overtime in the amount of $5,150, and that's just keeping up with the cost of the number of breaks we have in this community. And because we have an old infrastructure system, and we'll talk about that further down, we have a fair amount of breaks in town, and it's really taxing our overtime. I mean, this year, I know Brian's gonna be moving money, the director will be moving money throughout his budget to, to add to his overtime budget because of the number of breaks we've had this year that we had last year, and we're anticipating next year. And what happens, just for, just to get the information out there, usually when we have a break in a section of town, we're usually following up with a break in a nearby section of town, because the break just pushes the break further down the, the bad water line. And we had that recently on Charm Road, and we had, where we had an issue, I believe, on Shawshank Street. Because of that break, it caused the break in the Charm Road area, just continues to, to build on each other. Until we get these pipes fixed, we're gonna continue to have a series of water breaks in the community because of the old asbestos pipe that we have. Under the operating budget, utilities increased $4,900 based upon historic expenditures, leases and contracts increased $11,600 to undertake permanent repair of water break trenches and to undertake more leak detection throughout the system, so we can tighten up the system and not lose as much, have as much unaccounted water on an annual basis. Water meters, that line of also increased $5,200 to cover the cost of eight commercial meters that we know we're gonna need on next fiscal year. The capital budget, which funded some one-time capital items in FY '19, does not need any funding in FY '20 at this point, so there, there was a reduction in that line item. So, the overall budget had an, had an increase of $19,833. Water filtration, salaries increased $11,015. A normal year would have been a little bit more than that, but this year, we had retirements, and the new people coming in made less than the people that retired in the positions that we filled. So, salaries increased $11,015 mainly because of the cost of living increase of 2.25 percent, any step, step increases and longevity increases within the water filtration budget. From an operating side, we actually saw a decrease in utilities, and that was based on historic and projected usage, and obviously, because of the new plant, we believe we have more, our operations have new systems that are not only efficient, but we'll see a cost savings in our operations as we use them. Maintenance repair at the plant increased $20,213. It's important to note that the plant budget not only handles the plant, but also is responsible for the tanks, which are outside the plant, obviously. So, the $20,213 had, the main funding was for some spare pumps to have on hand for $3,000. $5,000 was to install electric SOBs at the Ames Hill tank, and that's essentially a piece of equipment that will go in the tank to circulate the water and move the water along. $2,500 will be used to purchase aeration blowers, or to maintain aeration blowers at the plant. They would like to rebuild two pumps at the plant for $5,500, and all of these funds will come from the increase in repairs and maintenance. Communications increased $2,700 for our CCTV monitoring. That increased $4,900, but that increase was offset by a reduction in the cost of mailing our consumer confidence report, which was a reduction of $2,500. Under all other supplies and expenses, that increased $3,295. Computer equipment decreased $1,900 since we're not purchasing, we're purchasing less computer equipment out of that line in FY '20 compared to FY '19. Chemicals increased $12,409, and that's based on the pricing of chemicals for FY '20, the use of those chemicals and the delivery, delivery of those chemicals throughout the year. Residual disposal, which is the sludge that is generated from the plant, that, the cost of disposal of the residual, residual disposal increased $7,250 because we're anticipating higher pricing once we go out to bid for a new contract next year. And then, finally, staff development increased $9,000 to maintain required licensing and training for the staff at the plant. So, the combined water enterprise budgets summarized on this slide. As you can see, the total water enterprise budgets increased $44,157 in the salary line and $59,236 in the expense line. The biggest area of increase for the water, combined water enterprise funds comes in the area of allocations, and again, these are the indirect costs that are charged to other departments. And the big increase in FY '20 is in health insurance because of the allocation for retired water enterprise employees, and the assessment to middlesex retirement had a large increase. In addition to the water enterprise operating budgets, I wanna just review the capital improvements for the water enterprise budget. For FY '20 through FY 2024, we're looking at $14,637,500 in capital improvements. $12,500, $12,500 is for water distribution, design and improvements. This is to improve our infrastructure and water pipes in the ground and to design those projects. We're looking at $1,090,000 for water tank maintenance and upgrades, mainly at the Astle Street tank. We have our annual hydrant, hydrant replacement program of $125,000, and vehicle replacements totaling $422,500. And those costs are shared with the sewer department for most of the five years. So, over the next five years, we're gonna be doing a combination of things. We're gonna be funding the water distribution with a combination of retained earnings and borrowing funds. As I mentioned before, the current retained earning balance is $2,356,468. And over the next 10 years, the plan is to borrow $2.1 million annually to address the water distribution upgrades and infrastructure. In FY '20 alone, we'll be looking to spend $4,335,000, $2.1 million water distribution improvements from retained earnings. We plan to borrow another $2 million for water distribution improvements, and the first year debt service cost will be in FY '20 in the amount of $285,000. year debt service cost will be in FY20 in the amount of $285,000. In the fall, we plan to seek an appropriation from retained earnings of $125,000 for hydrant replacement. In the fall, another appropriation of $90,000 from retained earnings for water tank, the Astle tank maintenance and upgrade improvements, that's specifically for the design. And then in the Maytown meeting, $25,000 for a vehicle replacement to be shared with the, with the sewer department. This slide is just informational, gives you an idea of what the percentage of our debt service is for water as a, as a percentage of the budget. In FY20, it's 37%. It'll drop for a few years and then go back up to 38% and 37%, mainly because we'll be borrowing for the water distribution improvements. The projected revenues in the water enterprise fund for FY20, we're projecting user fees to generate $6,841,412, $41,522. We're projecting water lanes to drop from our previous year's projections to $400,000. In all other fees, which are connection fees, water meter fees, demand fees, and application fees, we're projecting $100,000. For total revenue in FY20 of $7,341,522. And when you take the revenue against the budget expenditures, we're looking at a projected surplus of $178,873 in the water enterprise fund. This again is just for illustrative purposes, give you an idea of what the budget has looked like since 2010 for water, and how it looks like for FY20 budget compared to revenue. Now, regard to water rates. For FY20, the impacts and assumption to FY20 water rates are as follows. We are not recommending or projecting a need for an increase in water rates. Water usage for revenue projections was based on actual usage for the April 2018, August 2018, and December 2018 billing cycles. We also have a small billing cycle in June for out-of-town water, and we use that actual usage for, for sewer, but for water purposes, there are only three. Water usage is projected to be $6,747,955,000 gallons for FY20. That's up from around 650 million gallons that we projected in FY19. The rate projection that we'll review includes a borrowing of $2 million a year for the next 10 years for water distribution upgrades. So it's already built into the rates. Again, the water rate increase for FY20 is zero, so I think that'll be good news for residents. These are the tiers and these are the projected per gallon costs. The secondary meter rates will also stay the same, and they're, as they are reflected above, with the exception of the 47-plus tier. That has an added cost for conservation purposes, and that's $33,17. We need to stress conservation of water. This again is for illustrative purposes, showing the different usage amounts and what the bill would be from year to year, and obviously there's no increase. It's important to note the two highlighted areas. The average usage in town, because of the number of multi-units that we have, is around 55,000 gallons, so the average bill for that usage is $474.53. But the, the usage amount that the state uses when they, they look at water or sewer usage is 90,000 gallons per household, and that average bill would be $911.34. Just doing a quick rate comparison, we do not have any updated numbers on the state average or the state median, or state high and low since 2017. They only update that every two years. But as you can see, our average proposed bill of $911 is higher than the MWRA average, that's a 2018 number, and the state average. But again, we've done a lot of work in town in regard to water. We, we have our own treatment plant, which we just finished a $13 million upgrade to. We have water tanks, one new one that we borrowed money for and needed to pay for through the rates, and we need to undertake, again, $20 million of water distribution upgrades over the next 10 years that are factored into our rates. Just some comments on the rates in the enterprise fund before we conclude. As I mentioned, water distribution improvements will have, will have an impact not only in the current rates, but on the future rates, but we have built that in. The projection for future years has rates going up in FY21 through '24 in the amount of, at an increase of 4% a year. To pay for those increases in water distribution, that will level off to, to an increase of 2% from FY25 through FY30, and that's what we're projecting at this time. Now, obviously, that's based on current projections for other revenue that we take in, water usage being similar to what we're projecting for FY20, not having too many years that we have a lot of rain where no one uses water. So FY20, we will not have an increase, but in FY21, '22, '23, and '24, we should expect right now for projected increases of about 4% in those years. We hope to continue to build retained earnings. If we're fortunate enough to build retained earnings, that'll allow us hopefully to borrow less money, and that'll impact rates. It'll help fund capital projects that we have in the future because in addition to water distribution projects, we have the vehicles for the water enterprise fund that we need to fund and maintain, equipment for the water distribution and water plant that we need to maintain and purchase, hydrants that we want to continue to replace on an annual basis, tanks to maintain, and pump stations to maintain. That's it for water. Any questions on water?
There's some questions on, Ms. Drucke?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much for the work on this, and my question is, I love the fact that we've built in these costs for the capital improvements into the annual budget, but I just, what you're basically saying is if the retained earnings are able to be capitalized in a way that that would reduce that and could potentially reduce to 4%, 4%, 4%.
Could be, yep.
And then I was also wondering, so we had a change in billing, and now we've actually seen that change in billing for a full year, correct? And has that had an impact on any of this? I mean, we were hoping that that would kind of stabilize. Did that have the effect in the result that you were hoping for?
Yeah, I think, I think the new rate structure and the way we go back to zero, each billing cycle has lowered overall bills. We did a test of certain bills from one year to the next, and we did see that they were lower compared to the old way we used to bill, where we had accumulative usage throughout the year. So I do think it allowed residents to have lower bills. I think it did impact our revenue, but it, it allowed us to stabilize our projections because we were able to take every cycle on its own and project out what we, what we thought rates would be. So it did have a positive effect overall on our ability to project revenue, our operations, and I think residents' bills. Especially residents that had a leak in their system where, in the past, if they went past the billing cycle with that leak, it was a cumulative effect on them that they were hit, they were thrown into the higher rate for the rest of their billing year, whereas now they would go back to zero and start all over again. So I think residents have seen a positive response from it, and frankly, you know, we still get calls on water, water rates and billing, but I think they've, they've come down.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep. I know we talked about the number of water breaks in the community. Are we keeping track? Do we have like a list of where the, I see Brian said of the, seems like there's a number of them that happen in the same location year after year after year. Do we have a list of specific areas that we plan on addressing? I can think of like, you know, Salted, you know, Salted Brown Street, that's broken, I think, last three years in a row, pretty much in the same areas. And I know we're always out there in the middle of the night digging, probably because you get a cross connection there, break in one street, break in the other street, and you pat something, and it just puts a little bit more pressure on the rest. But do we have like the worst locations and where we plan to address those?
We actually, we've put together a water replacement program, water line replacement program, and we, that was one of the criterias, were we having all the breaks? Another one is what roads do we want to resurface? So we're not putting the water line in or fixing the road and then coming back and putting the water line in. So we pulled these criteria together, and, and there was a few others, but those are the important ones. And we came up with locations. Brown is going to be done, I believe it's this coming year. But what will happen and what Town Manager referred to is once you put the line in, the new line, and you won't have a break there, you'll have it the next weak spot in the system. And then we'll have to continue to revise our plan.
We did the work at, when we did the work on Shawshin.
Shawshin Street, right.
Put a whole new line in there, and I had a number of questions with people saying, didn't we just put a new line in there?
Right.
And it probably went to the old pipe that's on 38, and that's where it broke, I'm guessing.
Well, there, but also the recent one that we just had on Shawshin, just off Shawshin Street, was just beyond where we stopped the, the new installation.
I just want to let the residents know, bring it to their attention, because I know those people have been putting up with the same breaks in certain locations of what it is. So if there's, I mean, we map them out, we keep track of where they are, and try to address the worst ones.
We do, yeah. We put it on the GIS, and so we can spatially see where they are and have an idea where they go.
So in FY20, we'll continue to finish the work on Route 38. So we'll be doing work from North Street to Victor Drive, and Old Boston Road to Marshall. We're also going to be doing work on Woburn Street to replace the line there as part of the, the total of $4 million in FY20 for work. In FY21, we'll do work, the planned work is for the Bay State, the Bay State street neighborhood that we'll try to address. In FY22, we're going to be looking at Whipple, Whipple Astle in Miles, Phase 1.
Yep.
And then in FY23, we'll be looking at Whipple Street, Whipple Road from Windsor to Pleasant, that'll be Phase 2. And then in FY24, we'll be looking to, to Cardigan and William G. area. So this will be on the website this week, so people will be able to, so after tonight, tomorrow, we'll put together the entire five-year plan. You'll log on the website, and people will be able to see what we're going to be doing. Brian has a breakdown year to year, what he's going to be doing for areas.
Thank you. Yeah. So just jumping at the, the rate increase for FY21 to FY24, 4% a year, average home, what, what's the dollar amount roughly on the, based on current projections? I know you mentioned that at one point, just for residents' home, and then the 2%.
I just want to jump to that if I can.
Just to get a dollar amount on an average home?
Mm-hmm. So a 4% increase in 2021 on a home, 90,000 gallons is $36.65 a year. On a home with 55,000 gallons would be $18.98 a year. And then the following year would be another $37, and then another $19, so somewhere in that range on an annual basis.
Thank you, thank you. Just jumping back to in the water enterprise fund, you mentioned about the allocation increase of $191,000. Where is that shown? Is that shown in each budget under a line item, or how does that indirect cost?
Yeah, so when you look at the general fund budget, if, if you go under the Town Manager's budget, commuter services, accounting, a variety of budgets, all the DPW budgets, you'll see water allocation.
Okay.
And how much is being reduced from, how much is being charged, how much is being charged to the enterprise fund for water and sewer. So it's on the cover sheet of every budget for the general fund.
You do see that, and I remember you pointed that out when we went over the budget prior meeting, and that all those line items equal to that $191.
It's all there.
Yep.
And if you go to the summary budgets that are online, and that have been given to the Finance Committee and the Board, at the end of the workbook of the summary budgets, there's a tab that's, is allocations, and it lists all the allocations there. So it's not, so any resident can go on and pull that down.
Okay. Another quick question was on staff development, training, was increase of $9,000. I saw previous years, it was only like $2,500. Why such a big increase?
Just some changes to the contracts and what the town will reimburse for in regard to training and license renewals.
You know, if it was new employees getting up to speed.
Yeah, it's going to be new employees getting up to speed. It's, it's very difficult to find employees with all the licenses that we need, and we have at least one opening right now where we know we're going to need to bring the person up to speed with licenses.
All right, yeah, I just jumped out at me when I was looking at the line item. And then two other quick things. So the, in the capital improvements, when you talk about retained earnings balance at 2.3 million, and then you have the projects between 2020, 2024, so that's about 14, 15 million planned over the next.
Five years.
Five years. Is that, so could, do we, do we divide that number by five, and that's kind of what we're spending each year, you think?
We're definitely going to spend.
Or four?
Yeah, we're going to definitely spend, this year for, for distribution is 4.1 million, then the following four years is 2.1, so it's not as evenly split because of that.
Yeah. I'm sure it's not a perfect science.
Yeah, and then, and then in FY21, there's another million added in there for the water tank maintenance and upgrade at Astle Street, so that, that would throw it off. But for the most part, you're going to see definitely 2 million, 2.1 million dollars for water distribution, definitely $125,000 for hydrant replacement, and then the others will vary.
Okay. So with the 2.3 million in retained earnings, is that going to be exhausted?
It's going to be exhausted pretty much at the end of FY20. Hopefully, we build a little bit of that backup at the end of this fiscal year. Right now, our revenue is coming in better than projected, so we will have retained earnings in water. It'd be nice if we can get somewhere between half a million to a million or more, and then we can either hold on to it for a couple of years, but hopefully we can build it up.
Okay, and then just to, you know, you mentioned about the rate comparison from the state to the area, or, I wasn't sure what MWRA means.
Mass Water Resources Authority.
Okay. But, you know, you just pointed out, I know where we are, a little higher, but again, you have this, this plan, which is always great to see and have on paper, and to, you know, the rates are modest, but I think, if you think about all the things that we accomplished with all, all the repairs and all the. and all the upgrades that we've recently done, and we've paid for that, right?
That's right.
For the most part. I mean, that we've positioned ourselves for a solid future in H2O
Right.
With a modest increase over the next 10 years, correct?
That's correct. And what's important, when you look at the state average, or even surrounding communities, and specifically the MWRA, again, we run, we operate our own water treatment plant. MWRA communities do not, they may have satellite plants for some reason, but they all filter through the MWRA system. They'll be responsible for the pipes in the ground and maybe some pump stations, but their cost of operations is shared with all the other towns in the MWRA.
Yep.
The other thing is, when you look at some communities nearby, they have lower water rates because they have enough money in their general fund tax levy to subsidize water. So for example, there are communities that have enough levy capacity that they can keep water rates low because that levy capacity can help fund water projects. We are fully recovering, our enterprise fund fully recovers the cost of water operations, and that's important. We are not subsidized by the general fund at all. Other communities with that have extremely low rates or lower rates, a good portion could be in our.
Right. And just to call it out, I mean, you did, but as a resident and a business owner in town, when you see a 0% increase, that's a positive. And I don't think we really kind of hit that as, it's a positive. And small businesses as well as residents will appreciate that this year. And, you know, when we're talking about a level servicing budget, water rates at a 0% increase, I think that's a real positive, and I'm sure we'll get into some good stuff in the sewer.
Yeah, it is positive. And last year, we had a 3.5% increase. This year, we're down to zero. Next year, we fall. So we're trying to stay within that range
Yep.
Of zero to four and not have huge spikes on a, I think, I don't remember if you remember the, I think it was in the twenties maybe, higher. But so it's, we don't want that.
So thank you very much.
You're right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson, you had another one?
I just have had a question to kind of piggyback on that conversation. When you're talking about other towns basically masking what they're paying for water, I believe that there was some work that was done at the state to try and find out what towns' true water costs were, and that was met with some opposition. Am I remembering that correctly, or is that, did I dream that up?
No, there might have been, because I know that the state is trying to, they have a specific committee really looking at water infrastructure and the cost of communities. So that wouldn't surprise me. And I like the word mask, you know, the term, that's a good term to use because you don't know what the other communities' full water costs are because the general fund is subsidizing it. And I think DEP and the state's trying to figure that out for their own reasons, and what, where they can use their money the best.
And that leaves them in somewhat of a vulnerable position because they are not self-reliant in some ways and forms. And if the MWRA, you know, has a significant hit to that program, that's going to be a giant infrastructure problem for those towns and communities that participate in that program. So we are not only positioned well to give our residents a zero increase this year and have structured these rates in a way over the last several years where we're able to maintain, we are positioned in a place where we are self-sufficient and a little bit more self-reliant in terms of our water rates.
Right.
And my father, being a firefighter, would say to us, don't be wasting the water because it's such a precious resource. And, you know, I just think it's something that people take for granted, but for a long run, in terms of a community, we are extremely well-positioned.
I would agree with that, and we control our own destiny.
Right. That's a better way of saying it. Thank you.
So just to follow on comment to that conversation is, every community or many are in a different place with respect to upgrades to their infrastructure as well. And I think residents in Tewksbury can rest assured that we, as a community, have done the right things infrastructure-wise. We've made the investments, and our system is in a good place, in a good state. So that may not be the case in other communities that we're comparing to where they have to do some catch-up work. And the timing of that obviously varies, but that's an important consideration as well. So I have two questions, Mr. Montori, and then a comment. But the first question I have is, we continue, and you identified it, and you've budgeted for it. We continue to put an allocation of 125,000 a year in for hydrant replacement? We've been doing that for a number of years. So do you have any sense at this point tonight, or can you come back to us, where are we in that process? How far along are we to essentially full completion of our hydrant replacement?
Okay, I got you an update on that.
I'm guessing we're now five or six years into it?
At least.
And I'm curious how far we are.
I got you an update on that.
What do we get for 125,000 a year in terms of progress and what's left on the horizon? And then the second question I have is, it relates to your slide on the debt service as a percentage of the budget. And clearly, we're hovering in the mid-30s, so, you know, roughly a third of our budget is dedicated to debt. And you kind of answered this indirectly in a comment you made a few minutes ago relative to other communities and the like. But is there any benchmark data as to an appropriate ratio that we would be compared to? And I'm curious about how, for example, when the rating agencies look at our overall financial picture and they make judgments, and they comment on our debt levels, if they were to look at this micro number as opposed to perhaps a macro of the town in total, how would this number play? Is this a high number relative or an appropriate number? Or are we outperforming perhaps some of our peers?
Yeah, I can, I can look into that further. It's hard to say. There are times I look at it and I think it's high, but I think any of the financial rating agencies or any good practices will look, anyone looking at best practices will, would review it, and the first thing they'll say is, are you charging enough to recover your costs? Which we are. And that wasn't the case years back. But as long as there's a commitment to doing that and that you are not only recovering your costs, but you're generating a surplus and building retained earnings and have funding available for the so-called rainy day, which we do, I think that would put, make people comfortable in the debt amount we have.
Right.
It's when you're really up against it and you have no room for error.
Sure.
And we're okay.
Yeah. And just to kind of, again, recognize that these numbers include the cost of improvements that are continuously being made. So while we're trying to keep the rates level, we're also, in effect here, keeping debt constant. So in the grand scheme of things, I think, again, that's a sign or indicia of, you know, a clear plan and stable plan year over year. So hopefully, that gets, that gets across.
And just, and following up on that, and again, this is, with the exception, obviously, of FY '20, which is what we're focused on, the rest is a five to 10-year projection and plan.
Agreed.
So if in year two or three, something drastic happens, we'll pull the plug on the rest of the plan.
Right.
So it's, it's, that's the nice part of a looking down the road, just to see where you're going to be. But the reality is, two or three years out is a long time to look. You know, we could be sitting here next year with a greater than 4% increase for some reason that might come up, or no increase because
Right.
A good thing came, happened. So it's just tough to say right now.
So my comment, Mr. Chairman, not a surprise, because some of my colleagues have already mentioned it, but it shouldn't get lost, it shouldn't be brushed over. We've sat at this table, some of us in particular, have grappled with the other end of the spectrum, where we were forced and faced with decisions that had substantial rate hikes in order to balance out these budgets in this water in particular. So it is no small task to accomplish a zero increase and yet put substantial sums into our infrastructure and continue to keep the system moving in the right direction. So I think that should be hopefully recognized, and I hope that residents take note of that. And I appreciate the good work of you and your team to get us to that point.
Very good. I'll go one step further. A few weeks back, we asked Mr. Montori and the department heads to kind of tap the brakes on the overall budget. And essentially, the overall budget for the town is almost level set. You know, you have your salaries and your promotions, and this is a pretty common theme here. Now we're looking at water rates for 2020, and the rates are not increasing, you know. And again, we're essentially, we're using retained earnings. But just for the folks watching, for the residents, you know, it might be a myth that the town's in the business of making money on water. We're not in the business of making money on water. Is that an accurate statement? Where we set the rates accordingly so we can pay for salaries, infrastructures, everything we're talking about today. But I think it is important to note that the retained earnings piece essentially, for the residents, that's the leftover money or the surplus. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Correct. So I think in this budget, what we're saying is, hey, we've had some retained earnings, AKA, let's just call it taxpayers' dollars, that we're reallocating back to the residents that pay those taxes through the surplus. So I think clearly demonstrated that we're using those dollars for the residents and not increasing taxes. As a matter of fact, or water rates in this case, as a matter of fact, we used returned, water return earnings for 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 4 of the areas for capital improvements, we're actually using those, that surplus, if you would, to take care of those things. We talked about the vehicle replacements, water tank maintenance, hydrant replacements, and we're actually using, borrowing the $2 million, AKA, increasing the rates to 4% to pay for that water distribution improvement. So the bottom line is, we're using taxpayers' monies to actually not increase rates, use that to keep the rates where they need to be. But to Mr. Johnson's points, we're still making improvements while saving pennies along the way, so.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's fantastic. What's the first time, is this, when's the last time that we went up 0% for water? Any idea? I think we did that for sewer last year.
Sewer zero. Last few years, we might have had a 0% increase. They're scattered here and there.
We'll take it again.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Sewer. So sewer enterprise budget, there's only one budget in sewer. This is for the maintenance of the collection system that we have. As we all know, wastewater goes to the Lowell wastewater plant, where we're charged an assessment each year for the amount of, the number of gallons we send to the plant as a percentage of the overall gallons that the plant processes on an annual basis. Salaries for sewer enterprise increased $11,063, mainly for cost of living increase of 2.25%, any step increases, and longevity changes. The operating budget increased $27,130. And the main areas for that were utilities increased $10,140. And that includes gas for nine new generators that are online. And as I was alluded to earlier, for electricity for the 47 pump stations that we have in the community, which is a high number for a community to have. And the projection for utilities was based on historic and projected use, usage. Repairs and maintenance increased $12,050. This was for normal adjustments for goods and services within the department, manhole repairs, and again, maintenance of the nine generators that we have. Leases and contracts decreased $4,500. We had budgeted in previous years, generator maintenance in this line item, and we moved that over to repairs and maintenance. Grinder pumps, which is a line item within the sewer budget, increased $4,050 since units that we purchased for homeowners has a projected increase of 5%. Professional services increased $2,300, and this is mainly for the printing, stuffing, and postage of bills. All other supplies and expenses increased $3,500, which incorporates a 5% increase in the cost of materials and supplies and protective gear for the staff. Lowell sewer is decreasing $109,334, and this is based on the allocable costs that we have for our wastewater assessment in Lowell, and the amount of wastewater that we sent to the plant is lower than projected in FY '19. Finally, debt service has increased $73,567, and I believe fiscal '20 is the high year that we'll see in our debt service. There's no capital, no change in capital outlay, we're not projecting any costs in our allocations, as we talked about earlier, for, for Water Enterprise Fund, increased $47,640. Again, that's proportional to the increases that budgets that the allocations relate to increased. In regard to capital for sewer, this is a little bit different than water. Over the next five years, we're looking at capital improvements of $2,782,500. A major portion of those costs will be inflow and infiltration control, that's $1,750,000. Sewer pump station improvements of $650,000 in equipment that we share with the water department, and the amounts of $382,500. For FY '20 alone, we're looking at capital improvements of $495,000. 350 of that will be for inflow and infiltration, but instead of using retained earnings, we'll be using the Pulte gift account that we have set up for revenue, funding that we've received from Pulte Homes as part of a sewer agreement that we have with them, when we connected them to sewer back in 2016 as part of a development in Andover. And just to quickly review that, Mr. Chairman, the current balance in the Pulte account, gift account, is $962,455. Part of that is set aside for a pump station improvement that we're required to do. Funding was also for a traffic study for the intersection of Andover and River Road, that was $150,000. But in addition to that, they are to pay the town $174,780 over eight quarterly installments, totaling $1,398,240. So far, they've paid us five installments, so they have three more to go. And that funding was going into this gift account specifically for inflow and infiltration improvements. And this is important because in the past, when we've looked at using retained earnings to assist with offsetting the cost of debt or maintaining rates, it was difficult to do because, one, we wanted to make sure we had enough sewer retained earnings to undertake the projects that we had projected, address inflow and infiltration control issues. And with this Pulte gift account, this will allow us to utilize some of the retained earnings to help offset rates. So we'll talk about that a little further. But this is an important piece to our capital improvement plan. This was a good deal, that, a good agreement that was negotiated. The board approved it back in 2016 and signed it. And again, it generated enough money for the town to undertake sewer capital improvements for I&amp;I that they otherwise would have used retained earnings. So looking at the annual further, we're looking at $125,000 for sewer pump station improvements using sewer retained earnings, and $20,000 of sewer retained earnings to pay for a new van, new cargo van that we'll share with the water department. This next slide gives you an idea of the percentage of debt to budget for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And as we thought, as we looked at the water, which was somewhere around 36, 37%, as you can see, sewer is much higher because of the amount of sewer debt that we've undertaken. And this is all for the sewer project. We have not taken, undertaken any other debt except for the 110, 20 million that was borrowed for the entire town to be sewed. All capital that has been undertaken since I've been here has been paid for by retained earnings.
Any chance, I don't know if we talked about it, any chance to potentially Any chance, I don't know if we talked about it, any chance to potentially refinance down the road? Because we still have a lot of debt going all the way down to 2030, if you add it up. I mean, it's quick math. I mean, it's a ton of dough.
Yes. When we borrowed funds a few years back, we refinanced all the debt that we could for the time being. I think it saved us somewhere around $9 or $10 million over the life of the loans. The last time we borrowed funds, I believe, for the water treatment plant, we did not have any bonds that we could refinance at that time. Every time we borrow funds, which we will hopefully for the new elementary school soon, or for the water improvements, we'll look at all of our debt to see if any can be refinanced. And what determines that is what the interest rate at the time was compared to what the interest rate would be now to refinance. Sometimes we have more favorable rates, so it's not worth refinancing. And sometimes the loans have very specific language that don't allow for refinancing until we hit a certain date. So we'll look at that again.
Yeah, it just seems like we're in good shape. You know, just like refinancing your house, sometimes you get down to 20 years, you refinance to 30, you know, something? We can push the debt. I don't want to push the debt out, but I'm saying we're in good shape now. Maybe just something to consider, I guess.
Yeah, we consider it every, every time we do a borrowing, but we don't consider extending the term because that just adds more interest costs in the long run. So we'll look at doing it within the term that we have, and if it makes sense, we'll do it. We're on the downside of the debt right now, so...
Still massive, still almost north of $30 million, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and this is only 50% of it. The other 50% is in the general fund.
Right.
So when you look at this debt for FY19, it's really $9 million in debt, debt service we're paying. In FY20, it's, you know, 8.6 million, 7.6 million.
Is because the other portions in the general fund? Could you ever combine those as one?
It is one, we're just, just the way we pay for it.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Makes sense. Mr. Johnson?
I'd just like to say that working with this Enterprise Fund and the debt service on this, and knowing that we have actually restructured this, I think, twice, right?
At least, yeah.
Twice. I remember the first time I saw this, and I was looking at that 2020, and it seemed so far out. And here we are. So I feel like we're turning a corner on this debt. And again, we are in a place, you know, while people might say, oh my, you know, we are in a place where we are fully self-reliant on our SOWR system for whatever. And that will help us with economic development going forward. And that is something that brings people to town, so. And that is some of the reasons we've been able to do some of the progress that we have done. So I have to say, it is a very scary number, but...
If we did it twice, maybe we can do it a third time to town.
Yeah, no, absolutely. At the time, we borrowed money for the SOWR project, the rates were higher than they have been, and if we can refinance, we will. And we absolutely look at it every time, Mr. Chairman.
I think I remember looking at a 64. I'm freaking.
The next slide just gives you a summary of what the revenue would be for SOWR Enterprise Fund. We're projecting user fees to be $5,272,000, $72,159, an increase of $72,292 over the FY19 projection. We're projecting means and interest and fees to down to $250,000. Connection fees, $125,566. And just of important note, when you look at this slide, if you look over at column FY18, connection fees, you can see how they change. In FY18, we had a fair amount of building in town, especially large projects that paid large connection fees to the town. So we're always careful in how we project those. All other, $25,000. And then this is the big number, retained earnings in FY20. We are going to use $1,026,790 from retained earnings to help offset the cost of debt for the SOWR Enterprise Fund. And this will allow the board and the town to shift back from the tax levy, $740,000 that has been on the property tax levy for the last few years, and provide for some tax relief to residents, which we'll talk about in a minute. When you look at the surplus that we're projecting for FY20, it's $10,702 based on what we're projecting for our budget. This next slide gives you an idea of what the budget to revenue has been and will be Moving into rates themselves. The assumption for rates, again, there is no rate increase for FY20, similar to water. Sewer usage for revenue projection purposes is based on April 2018, August 2018, and December 2018 billing cycles, so it's actual usage. As I mentioned earlier, there's a fourth billing cycle for out-of-town SOWR, and we're using the actual usage for those out-of-town projections. Projected sewer usage for FY20 is 517,832,000 gallons. That's up from approximately 501 million gallons in FY19 that was projected. The rates incorporate shifting $740,000 of SOWR debt from the property tax levy back to the SOWR Enterprise Fund. The property tax impact by making this shift is a savings of $52.65 to the average home that's valued at $404,963, or a reduction in the tax rate of 13 cents per thousand for residential and 23 cents per thousand for commercial, industrial, and personal It's important to note that these projections for savings are based on today's values for FY19. FY19 shift in FY19 percentages of residential to commercial. So that's as of today.
And Mr. Montori, I mean, if you look at the 52, 65 potential savings, coupled with the increase, I think it was 36-something for the average water use, I mean, it's a net-net, you know, you don't put them together, but from a resident's standpoint, you know, if you put the SOWR together with the savings, first of all, the expenditure was still, what's it, in the red?
Black.
What? The black, yeah. So anyhow, I wanted to point that out.
What's the, Mr. Town Manager, the percentage, is that like a 6% decrease on an average home?
I have to do that math.
Probably a few days.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I was just curious on the percentage.
No, it's probably less than that.
I'll put you on the spot. I guess I did.
No, no, no. I'll have that number for the end of the night.
I was just curious when you're talking about it.
And that's on top of a 0% increase?
Correct.
So it's 0, 0 plus a savings of 52.
Mm-hmm.
And can I just jump in?
Of course. Sorry.
No, I, I feel like I'm breaking your stride. But the tax levy, because that was a very difficult decision for the board to make as well, in terms of the, it's, I think that part of this is the gift account that's giving us the ability to do this, correct?
Yeah, the gift account really was a big help.
Okay. And that was a great way for us to think about additional revenues that are brought into the town that are impacting the town in a really positive way to lower our taxes without putting a strain on, and these are what I'm saying in terms of being self-reliant, we, other communities would not be able to do, maybe take off something like this. And that's why they're looking to us. But that levy, how long was that debt going to be on the taxes before it fell off?
To 2025, so...
2025.
20...
So like eight, seven years? Seven years?
Six years.
It's going to go to 2027.
2027?
Mm-hmm.
So, wow. That's great.
A lot of savings.
Yeah, because it impacts over two and a half, so it's more. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's good. So the rates are going to stay the same in each of the tiers. There will be no increase for the out-of-town rates and the exempt property rates. They'll stay at zero, they'll have no increase either. But you can see the difference in the rates. And what's important, the out-of-town and exempt property rates, those are what the rates in this town would be if we did not shift 50% of the SOWR debt to the property tax levy. So if the town didn't vote that, and the board of selectmen didn't bring that forward years back, that's what the rate would be to the SOWR user. So it's important to note.
Mm-hmm. And can I just ask one more question to, basically going back to the, the Pulte, so we're on top of this gift account, we're going to be getting the out-of-town rates on that project for years to come?
Mm-hmm.
So that is another...
It'll be a plus.
Big plus that's going to play into the retained earnings, to your point in the debt service.
Yep. No, that's, that's absolutely true. And in connection to the out-of-town rates, the new development by Pulte Homes is going to generate annual SOWR revenue far as that. We had, we've, it's part of our projections, but they're really not fully ramped up yet, so we'll see. That should increase. There's two areas of concern when it comes to SOWR rates that I just want to note. The out-of-town rates, not Pulte, but the ones on Daskin Road, once the Lupoli project moves forward and SOWR is brought up to that area, some of those companies could connect to that, and that could impact us in the area of $261,000 a year. We'll have to monitor that closely. Some may stay on depending on what the rate in Andover is. They could have a higher rate than us, I'm not sure. In regard to the state hospital, we receive a fair amount of revenue from the state hospital for SOWR this past year. We'll see some, a good surplus in our revenue because the state hospital had some very high bills because they have a combined sewer and drainage system. So when it rains, they have all of the drainage going into their drainage system and into the sewer system, which is going through the meter, which we're billing. So that is something that's unique depending on how rainy it is. For projection purposes, just so you know, we projected half of what they had for usage this year, so we wouldn't be caught in that trap if they haven't fixed their drainage system. But it is an inflow and infiltration system that will be addressed by them at some point and be required to be addressed by them. We're going to want to require it because that's all going to Lowell. So those are two important areas that we need to keep an eye on. The out-of-town sewer on Daskin Road and then how the hospital handles their combined sewer and drainage.
Might have to offset their costs by charging them for water.
Well, they're not, they're not part of our water.
Okay.
So, but that's also interesting, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you brought that up. Currently, they have their own wells, and I think they're seriously considering whether it's more cost-effective to jump on the town's water system. So it's something we'll look at.
Very good.
I don't want to be a brat, but let's hope that they wait until about 2022 so that we can get over the hump with their drainage repairs.
So this slide's illustrative also, just on what the rate, what the bills are for the various users. Again, the average user of 55,000 gallons is $437, and the typical household of 90,000 gallons is $833. This again gives a comparison of where we are with the state average. We're doing pretty good when you look at the 2017 state average. We're at 833, state average is 862, state median is 838, and the MWRA is $1,035. So when it comes to SOWR, we're doing better. But again, the reverse in SOWR, for us, we're subsidizing 50% of the debt on the general fund. So you can see what, how the impact is to us. Comments on the SOWR rates? You know, back in 2011, we had about 62% of the potential users connected. Now we're about 73%. Future debt, we're on the, we've hit the high point, and it'll start to decline, but just to, again, piggyback on what the chairman mentioned, we'll always look to refinance debt to see if we can save money. Again, these are just projections for the out-years. For SOWR, we're going to see increases similar to water. I just want to pull that up. Over the next four years, you'll probably see a 3% increase for SOWR. It'll drop down to 2% and then eventually drop off to a level, if not a decrease. So we'll see similar increases there, too. And again, that's all based on usage and retained earnings for projects on a given year. We'll continue to try to improve our rate projections. I think SOWR is one of the more difficult rates to project. Munis doesn't provide as good a reporting as they do for water, but I think we're getting better at it, better at it. We'll generate some decent retained earnings at the end of fiscal '19, as I mentioned, because of areas like the hospital. And we'll need to watch the out-of-town users and the state hospital use as we move forward and, and stay away from building in too much of their revenue into our projections because it may go away. That's it for SOWR. Any questions?
I'm happy.
I had a quick question, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
I had a quick question.
Oh, what's that?
Going back to the, the actual budget, you were pulling out some direct expenses, that reserve fund. I don't know if you touched on that. I know you listed it here for $60,000.
Yes.
And that's just doing, just good business practice?
It is.
Which we haven't done in the past?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a reserve fund in the past. We haven't needed it, but it's there in case we run into an emergency or a situation where we don't have funding for it. We have one in the water also, we have one in the general fund, and as I mentioned, we built one into Cable also. And it's there for the finance committee to approve if DPW runs into any extraordinary situations.
That's separate from retained earnings?
It's separate from retained earnings.
And then just, I guess, a quick comment on, you know, if you really think about the, what the rates could, could have been without the work of the selectmen a couple years ago by shifting that debt on the property tax. It's incredible. It's almost like it could be double or triple the amount of your bills at this time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's just good foresight, I think, for the board at that time as a resident. That's it.
And if I just can double back on something. So the next, after 2020, starting in 2021, for four years, we'll probably see a 3% increase in rates. And then we'll see three years of 2% increases before it levels off and probably start seeing a decrease because debt will drop off at that point. An average bill in FY21, a 55,000 gallon user would go up $13.12, and a 90,000 gallon user with a 3% increase would go up $24.99, just to give you some idea.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
So we just looked at these three enterprise funds, and I just want to note for the record, how many FTEs do you have when you're looking at those salaries? And I just want to say that a 2.25 increase, including longevity, is a very modest increase in, for the amount of work that is done by the town employees. I just kind of want to recognize that because if I'm looking at these numbers in terms of where your FTEs, I think we're getting...
Yeah, so we have four in the SOWR. We have two in the Cable. Water, we have 11. water, we have 11. For the filtration plant and for the distribution group, we have seven. And then we have a assistant director that works to oversee all three, all enterprise for water and sewer. So that's an additional one. And then we have a water sewer billing person. That's another added full-time one.
Not a lot of people for the work that they're all putting.
No. No, it was, you know, it's not. When you think of maintaining the entire system outside the plant and maintaining the plant itself, it's not a lot, not a lot of stuff.
I just want to thank them. That's all.
Please. Any other questions from the board?
It must be my Christmas. This is what you asked for.
Very favorable.
Okay, we can move into the capital plan.
Before we do, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, you're recommending a shift, right?
I'm recommending a reverse shift, yeah.
Do you want to entertain a motion to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, so I was on the board in 2014 when we started that process. And I recall specifically at the Pike House in meetings where the then Board of Selectmen was very clear that the hope was that this could be something that would be reversed when conditions allowed. And I think these steps were taken to avoid, as was described earlier, very draconian rate hikes. So there was a huge impact in a positive way for rate pairs as a result of the shift. But the clear intention was that when conditions allowed, the board, whoever was here, would certainly consider it. And we, at the time, we asked the town manager to look at it annually. And I believe each year he's spoken to that in his presentations on rates. So it's nice to see that we can get to that point and we're able to do that. If my research is correct, there is a statutory section that we relied upon to adopt or approve the shift. So I'm going to make a motion that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 110, Sections 111, 113, 114, and 116 of the Acts of 1993, adding General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 52, and Section 21(c), subsection n, to eliminate the shift and return the $740,000 to the sewer enterprise fund.
Okay, is that accurate? I mean, we don't have to specify. That's, so the motion's on the table there. We're referring to the rates incorporate shifting the 700, 740, 700?
Forty thousand. We'll move it off the tax levy to the enterprise, sewer enterprise fund.
Okay. And that's the recommendation, Mr. Montori?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Melissa. Very, very good.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Through you to the town manager, is that something that we have to vote on at town meeting to reverse it?
Nope. It's all the Selectmen.
You just did it.
Oh, it felt refreshing.
Okay. So the capital improvement plan for FY '20 through FY '24. And I won't go into detail of all these projects, but this is the five-year plan for the town. And it incorporates the enterprise fund, water and sewer enterprise fund. This does not include the schools. The schools have their own five-year plan. But when I, when I speak later on to future needs and impacts, I take into consideration the school's needs. So we have that factored in. So this first, the first two pages, the first two slides that we're going to review, and the first two pages that will be in the capital improvement plan that'll go online tomorrow afternoon, incorporates all of the projects in, for the departments in a summary form. And we break it down for facilities and grounds. And under facilities and grounds, we address police station, library, town hall, and town Atlantic senior center, facilities and grounds itself, and then recreation fields and facility improvements. We also have an area for the, section for the fire department. And that's mainly for their vehicles, as well as they'll have needed upgrades for the south and north station in the future. And then the main portion of the capital plan is for public works. The general fund, public works, is broken into stormwater and drainage, transportation, which is our roadways and our sidewalk improvements, facilities, which is the DPW facility. We carry a number in this capital plan each year. But we've done nothing about it. And someday, we're going to have to. And then fleet and equipment for the general fund is also here. And then under water and sewer enterprise fund, we break out the variety of needs that we just talked about in the presentation. The plan also goes into sections of how we anticipate paying for these items. The first, for general fund projects, the areas that we anticipate either raising and appropriate, appropriating funds for, transferring them from the, transferring funds from the stabilization fund, using CPA funds or free cash. All of the facilities and grounds projects that we're anticipating for the building, various buildings and equipment for facilities and grounds will come from the stabilization fund and free cash in the future. Fire department vehicles will be paid for by free cash or stabilization fund in FY ' '20 and into the future. And then the DPW stormwater in transportation, facilities, and fleet will be funded by transfers from the stabilization fund or free cash in the future. The one area that's still an unknown, obviously, is how we're going to fund the facility itself, which is over $7 million and probably growing at this point. That'll be a combination of many sources to fund that. The transportation portion of the DPW general fund capital, specifically roadway and drainage, a large portion of that is funded by Chapter 90. This is an important area to look at because Chapter 90 really is our only source of funding for roadway improvements, paving, possibly sidewalks, other improvement projects to our roadways. But if you look at the stormwater compliance, stormwater drainage repairs, stormwater improvement projects or project development, that takes a large portion of our Chapter 90 money away. And I want to point that out, and I know no one wants to hear this, especially on the night we talked about zero increases. In the near future, we will need to develop a stormwater enterprise fund and start charging a fee to residents and to businesses for the cost of maintaining our stormwater and drainage system. We can't sustain the maintenance of that system by using Chapter 90 or the general fund. It's taking away from some other important areas. Other communities have moved to a stormwater utility and they're seeing anywhere from a 50, $50 to $60 fee to residents on an annual basis to maintain the system. The DPW is in the process of going through with a consultant in identifying what a utility fee and enterprise fund would look like. And in the next year, you'll probably see that come forward to the board for review and possible, and a recommendation from us. But in order to keep our ponds and our rivers and our waterways clean and to ensure that our stormwater system is not contaminating those waterways, a fee is going to be needed and some even greater amounts of money than we're projecting here will need to be spent. We're only spending what we know we can afford. We can probably spend much more than this, and we should spend much more than this. But the hammer that's going to come down on us is the new permit has been approved and the state is going to require towns to undertake these projects. The state's, the state and the federal government's going to require us to have a funding source. So it's going to come at us in a very fast and hard way in just preparing the board for this to come about in the next year. Did I miss anything, Brian?
And for some of these, Mr. Montori here, especially around, I see the sidewalks and pavement, could some of these potentially come from the transportation improvement program through, like the NIMCOG?
These are outside of that. This plan is outside of the tip that NIMCOG has. So in addition to these projects, the tip has projects on there for Route 38, the Mill Street Bridge is a, as a project, the intersection of 133 and River Road. These are our own local projects that we, that we need to fund.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I think they're, based on last week's meeting, I'll send, give the board an update at the end here, they did talk about stormwater, how prevalence be coming, and they do have budget for that. So I might get with Mr. Sadwick there to see how we might tie into that if we can.
Yes. NIMCOG has been very active in helping communities with stormwater. And without them, coordinating the efforts of many towns, we would be, we would be further behind. So I really appreciate the work that they've done. The next slide just gives you an indication. Sorry.
I just got one question. I'm not sure if it's an error, but on the first slide, on the sidewalks, we have 250, and then the FY '21 and '22, so $650,000.
Mm-hmm. That's not an error.
Okay.
So what's going to happen is it's just two different funding sources.
Okay.
Our plan is for the general fund to fund $250,000 worth of funding each year for the next five years for sidewalks. And the DPW through their pedestrian, call, what do you call it, mobility plan.
Well, our funds are finally coming through. Okay.
Yeah. They're going to use, so we're going to use that funding and funding we're going to look for through complete streets. We'll add another 400 in certain years to get to the 600. So it's a combination of both. But this plan, you know, contemplates at a minimum $250,000 a year from the general fund to address sidewalks in the community. And then in addition to that, complete streets, we'll throw in another four.
We can use 650 each year, but that's great to hear. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move off this slide, if you wouldn't mind, I do have a question. Tom, back to the stormwater. I think that while your message tonight about the stormwater was well-delivered and well-received from, we've been talking about this for a while. And this is another one of those unfunded mandates. Is there anything that the state is going to, I mean, these, they are serious regulations and they are absolutely necessary. And I understand why they're doing the work that they're doing in this area. But is there any relief coming from the state as they, as you, as you harbor, as it comes to us fast and furiously as you state?
Yep. There's going to be no relief from the state. None. And the reason why, and you brought up a good point, how this has been something we've been talking about for many years, but the difference now is the permit is final.
Okay.
For years, they kept telling us the permit's coming out, the permit's coming out. Well, it's out and it's final. And it's not going to be one of these areas that they'll look at as an unfunded mandate.
Okay.
So.
Disappointing.
It is disappointing, but.
Number one.
Thank you.
So moving on, so the next slide, again, was Chapter 90. The slide after that gives you an indication of how we're going to use retained earnings for the various projects. identifies we will use the Polte Gift Fund facility. The next slide is the borrowing of the $2 million a year and the annual impact it has on the, the water enterprise fund for a 10-year loan at 4.25% interest rate. And that's an interest rate I got from Unibank, our financial advisors. Then the last slide just gives you a summary of the total capital plan for each year and then what the annual cost of the capital plan is for each of those years. And the reason why it's, the annual capital improvement plan cost is less is because you're only funding the debt service for water distribution where the costs above have the full $2 million. Now specifically looking at FY '20, the proposed expenditures to come from the stabilization fund are as follows. Right now, there's $4,740,968 in the stabilization fund. This is a list of the DPW items that they're looking for, totaling $925,000 addressing sidewalks, at $250,000, $120,000 worth of stormwater improvements, traffic signal upgrades, $35,000, and then vehicles for the department, to upgrade vehicles within the DPW general fund highway. The fire department is looking for a new rescue truck that is needed. And we are on an every-other-year purchase or re-chassis of our ambulance for our new frontline ambulance. That's $165,000. The police, $88,500 for an HVAC system controller that the facilities director has brought forward. And then for the POCS department, two pieces of equipment for maintenance of the recreation area. The first is a trash harper vehicle. This is a vehicle they use to drive around the recreation fields to pick up the trash barrels. And then the other is a Ventrek winter machine with attachments. This will allow them to snow blow in the winter. And the attachments that they'll have in the summer, spring, and fall will help them groom the fields much better than we currently do. So we're looking to take $1,264,416 from the stabilization fund. As you can see, the schools did not bring in, bring any projects forward at this time. They have funding in their capital outlay budget to address technology items. And they have funding still available in accounts to address building maintenance. They'll revisit their capital in the fall once they get past this fiscal year. In the water, we went through what we're proposing to do for capital. Water distribution upgrades will come from retained earnings. The $20,000 that they'll split with the sewer department will be for a new cargo transit, for a transit cargo van. And then finally, when it comes to capital planning, just again, things that we continually need to monitor and fund DPW equipment. Really, we've, we've addressed DPW equipment last fiscal year and hopefully this coming fiscal year better than we have in the past. We concentrate in another areas first. Pavement management, we need to try to get all the funding in Chapter 90 money or free up our Chapter 90 money to, to allow us to pave more roads in town. Stormwater permit compliance, we spoke about earlier, will be coming forward with the stormwater utility at some point. Town and school facilities, all of our buildings need to be maintained so they don't fall too far behind in repair. And as we know, school facilities will need to be addressed, even with the new elementary school, if that's approved, will need to address improvements at the heat block and at the, at the doing. And then sidewalks, we just want to make sure it's on our radar screen every year. But right now, we have funding of $250,000 each year for sidewalk improvements. And again, those improvements will be in accordance with the, with the pedestrian mobility plan that we have. And on paving, just to go back to that, when we put the capital plan on the website tomorrow, you get to, there will be a list of streets that we plan to do over the next five years. So people will be able to see that when they look at the plan.
Mr. Montori, I know we're almost done. It's getting late. Just jumping back to the fire and police, I don't think we need to take a vote, but I'd like to put an ask in on behalf of the board that we follow up with our Senator Feingold and our two state reps to kind of send them a missile on behalf of the fire costs and the police costs and tie that into the state hospitals, send them a friendly letter and see if we can get some compensation of $165,000 and $88,500.
I'm always for that.
Can't hurt to try.
Should I keep going?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
The next slide, just again, want to The next slide, just again, want to mention the future needs as we, as we complete the capital budget for FY '20 for the May town meeting. And as we always know, it's a two-part process for us. At October special town meeting, from an operating budget standpoint, the needs that will be funded, needs that will, and priorities that we'll need to review and most likely address and fund, our school staffing and operating, public safety, overtime and staffing, DPW staffing, ongoing infrastructure and facilities maintenance. From capital improvement standpoint, things that are not going to be addressed in May, but will need to address in the fall, carpeting for the library and the senior center. Both of those were brought forward by the department heads and the director of facilities, and both comfortable waiting until the fall, but it's something we need to make sure we address. Improvements to the south fire station, that was something that we were hoping to address in FY '20. We pushed it back to FY '21. If funding is available in the fall, it's something we'd like to address. It's about $50,000 for interior upgrades. The schools most likely will revisit their capital plan come the fall, and their priority will be, as it normally is, buildings and technology, specifically looking at HVAC and window upgrades for the Heat Brook Elementary School. With our free cash in the future, we always want to set aside $600,000 for a possible snow and ice deficit. We also want to replenish the million, $1,264,000 that we're using this year for, at May town meeting for capital improvements. We want to replenish that with our free cash, replenish the stabilization fund in the fall with free cash. We want to use available funds for the DPW facility upgrade in the future. Hopefully, we can figure a way to put funding together to address the upgrades to the DPW facility that are long overdue. Use of funds to address town or school facility, facilities, equipment, infrastructure, needs that may occur. Once we complete this budget process, it never fails, we pass the budget the first Monday in May, and first Tuesday in May, we'll come up with something that we didn't fund or we need to fund. So that's a given. And then any available water retained earnings should be used in the fall to, for improvements to the Astoll Street water tank and hydrant replacement. And hopefully, we can build up our water retained earnings to not have to borrow $2 million a year and maybe borrow less than, lessen the impact any rate increases. Sorry for going so long, but that's it.
Comments from the board? Short brief for me. I mean, this is fantastic. I mean, right out there for the five-year plan. Everything's on paper, sound plan, fiscally conservative. Great job, Mr. Montori.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all. Okay. Brings us to minutes. We're almost there. Mr. Brian Dick.
There's no minutes scheduled to approve. I know there was some for us to review, so we'll approve those next meeting.
Okay, very good. Board member reports. Mr. Crapton.
None of my committees met in the last previous two weeks, so I'll have an update on the next meeting.
Very good. Ms. Stronach.
The elementary school building committee is out in force, doing a lot of community meetings, and I would ask that people keep their eyes on the website. We're doing some during the day, some at night, some at the schools, some at the senior centers, some at the library. If people have other places where we should be targeting, we're open to those conversations. I do want to thank the town manager for meeting with the residents every single Friday so that he can address those concerns, bring them back to the group, so that we are working very diligently in addressing and mitigating what we can in terms of concerns of the butters as well as the community at large. So I think that you're going to see a lot more information coming out. I know that the town manager, the building chick, and the project owner's manager have been working very diligently since we last met. The MSBA on February 13th gave the numbers, so we're crunching those numbers so that we can get accurate information out to residents in terms of what the cost impact is going to be, and break down those cost impacts in a way that people can see what is being paid for. I would like to caution people that when we're looking at ineligible costs and things that the town are doing, we are really looking at that site as a campus, and the work that we're doing there is not just the sports facility. We're doing upgrades to the center school administration and where the administration's going to be housed, looking at the traffic flow within the area, which is a huge endeavor, and that I am hopefully going to be seeing in my own personal life, a big improvement on that in the morning when I'm heading to work. And so it's not just the athletic fields, and I want to caution people to really take a look at what those costs are, because it is not just about a field, and I think that's important to state. And the local housing met last week, and there are some potential senior housings that, opportunities that could be taking place where the old fire station is, which would be an --
Old police station.
Old police station. Thank you. Thank you. We don't have an old fire station yet. The old police station, and that would fit in nicely because it would abut Carnation Drive. And I look forward to seeing some information about that project as we settle up with the state. And I know that that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Brian Dick.
Nothing to add, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Todd Johnson.
Just two things. One, last night, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting hosted by the Tewksbury Public Library. I want to commend them for hosting. It was a meeting comprised, or roundtable discussion comprised of the various nonprofit organizations throughout Tewksbury. It was very highly attended, and each organization spoke briefly about their mission and ways that the residents in town and business owners in town could assist them in their mission. What's most impressive about it, quite frankly, is the number of organizations, the clear vision that each have in the mission to better our community in very, very many ways. An impressive sight to see. Some of the groups have been part of the fabric of our community for upwards of 50 years. So it was, again, an impressive group of organizations, and we all have participated, witnessed, and seen their efforts throughout our town. But I don't think there are many occasions when they all are represented in the same room. So it was quite an opportunity for a discussion among those groups. And the only other thing I'll say, Mr. Chairman, is that many nights, we sit at this table, and we make difficult decisions. Tonight wasn't one of them. The decisions to make were quite easy. But it shouldn't be lost on residents that, you know, 0% increase in water, 0% increase in sewer, and a shift of monies off of a tax bill that results in a $52 tax decrease for the average home on the near-term horizon. So in all of the meetings that we've attended here, it's pretty rare that we're able to deliver that kind of positive outcome. So I want to recognize that one more time.
Very good. All right, short and sweet. NIMCOG met. That's the Northern Middlesex Council on Government met last week. I just want to give the residents a quick update on three projects. Number one, the intersection improvements at Main and South, Main Street, Salem Road and South Street is on the books for 2019. Also, it's a Christmas miracle, the resurfacing of Route 38 from Colonial Drive to Old Boston Road is scheduled for 2021, which is good news. And last but not least, the repairs to the Mill Street Bridge are also set for 2019, and that's the Mill Street Bridge over the Shoshine River. So three pretty big projects coming down the pike, just as a heads up. And the only thing I had, there's some incredible stuff going on at the high school right now, so I kind of want to recognize some of the winter sports. First and foremost, Michaela Page, she won the all-state championship in the 600 meter. And oh, by the way, that was the fastest, second fastest time in the country, which was 1 minute 29, 1 minute 29 seconds. That's incredible. Second fastest in the country, and she's only a sophomore. So that's huge for Michaela. Kobe Wilson, Zach, Tom, and Ethan, they're qualified for the national championship in sprint relay. Again, incredible accomplishment. Our boys hockey team, actually, they're playing tonight, they're playing Linfield in Division II tournament, so they're in the playoffs. Our girl bas, our girls' basketball team is home Thursday at 8:00, Division II quarterfinals, either versus Saugus or Marblehead. And last but not least, our girls' hockey team, 18-1-1, incredible. They play Saturday night against the winner of Westford Academy at Lincoln Sudbury. So really incredible achievements for our folks playing sports in the high school, really great times. So if you can, go root them on. And that's all I have. So do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion. I have a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.